I will go ahead and get her started. Open public comment. Sir, can you please cease the cross chatter out there? Thank you. Open public comment. The public is allowed to speak on items or issues or items that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items remaining to the business of the governing body. The commission will not discuss or debate these items nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments.
Hello, my name is Ronald Hutchins and I'm here to comment about the upcoming change in the land development code, where they're changing the RS seven property surrounding the Alvamar neighborhood and the Alvamar Golf Course to an R two, which will reduce the size of the of the land of the lots that would have to be built out there. And it would be more appropriate to change it to something like R one, which is the same property that Lawrence LLC has developed on and also pardon me, Ball Creek Farms, sorry. Ball Creek Farms is developed on. And the Alvamar neighborhood, there's really not any lots out there. They're under 10,000 square feet that I know of. They're all they're all over in the that. And right now with the Alvamar nine and the situation that it's in, it's kind of been the Tahoe Club has kind of refused to maintain it. So it's just been overgrown and abandoned and they've started tearing up some of it, particularly behind my house. And this this change in the development code will just encourage them to go ahead and demolish it by neglect if you could kind of get my meaning to just kind of let that go and then come in there and develop that property as more homes in the area, although they would be smaller homes on lots that would be pretty close to half the size of the lots in the Alvamar neighborhood. And so I just want to say that I'm against that change in the code. And that's about all I want to say.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your service to our town. I'm Paul Meyer and I live on the lower end of Wimbledon Drive and I'm here also about the Alvamar neighborhood. You know, I'm sure you've noticed that there's nothing quite like walking a neighborhood to get to know its people and its character. Seeing it through your windshield is not quite the same thing, is it? So my early morning walks through my neighborhood on what used to be the golf course show how brilliantly that neighborhood was designed. We've got the homes on the higher ground and we've got the valleys, the natural valleys, which are the drainage areas for those hills. And it's an encouragement to so much wildlife, I cannot tell you. We've got coyotes, bobcats, ducks, geese, herons, hawks, eagles who depend on those woods and those waterways, the ponds and the streams and the and the and the springs. It would be a tragic disaster to develop those natural features, destroying those habitats. So if you haven't already, let me invite you to my neighborhood to take that early morning walk with me. The bottom line, the Alvamar Green District space must be preserved. It is integral to the neighborhood's character, stability and sustainability. And we are here to work with you when that time comes to to allow that to happen. Bottom line, I know it's a few weeks from your final decision on on all this, but when it time comes, please please do anything you can to preserve the unique character of this historic Alvamar neighborhood. So thank you in advance for your thoughtful care of the historic Alvamar neighborhood and its 1,100 plus residents and its wildlife inhabitants. Thank you very much.
Forgot my glasses, I'm sorry.
I don't know if I'm speaking out of order, but you cannot hear what they're saying. Can you fix the mic so I can hear?
Bring it closer, bring it closer, bring it closer to their mouth.
Oh, yeah, if you could speak right into the mic.
Is this better? Is that better? No?
You might get a little bit closer to it.
Well, I can't get any closer right here.
Okay.
My name is Marilyn Meyer and I'm here today to join my neighbors in asking that you please decide to reverse your plans to change the code for the Alvamar Golf Course. When I spoke to the Planning Commission in July, I asked that before such momentous decision is made, you search your hearts to realize how this will change Lawrence forever. It will destroy something very special. Hills, trees and a pond, all harboring wildlife, not to mention one of the most beautiful parts of Lawrence. I grew up in a wonderful town in Kentucky that had a beautiful vibrant river town, riverside downtown. Developers came in and they built ugly box stores and destroyed the heart of the city. The local merchants went out of business and all that was left was a memory. It has taken 50 years to begin to come back. I've supported affordable housing and other progressive issues all my life, but there's a right way and a wrong way to approach affordable housing and zoning changes. Destroying an environmental treasure is the wrong way, in my opinion, and sandwiching new development into an area that is ill suited to the development is unwise. Please think of what this change of zoning means to this town and how it can never be put back into the beautiful area it is once changed. The future of this town rests on your shoulders. Let's hope Will's wisdom prevails. By the way, since the meeting with the Planning Commission last a few weeks ago, an eagle perched on our deck for three straight days. No more eagles or wildlife if this goes through. How tragic and heartbreaking. Please, please think hard before you make the decision. Thank you.
I would agree with the comment. It's very hard to hear anybody back there. I came to the city hall. I was reminded of an old routine by Bert and I and other stories from down east. You really can't get here from there with the construction outside. My name is Michael Williams. I live in the Alvamar area and I really wish to thank all of you for your service to the city. I also would like to thank planning staff, a group that often catches flack and receives no actual acknowledgement. And finally, I would like to mention that I was quite impressed with your consultant when she spoke at the last meeting that I came to. Well, came to electronically. In thinking about the problem that faces you, I was reminded of a statement by the comedian Will Rogers. Land is the only thing they're not making any more of. In the modern era, I think you could change that to open spaces, the only thing they're not making any more of. If in your undertaking, you generate an impact analysis, that impact analysis cannot be the typical analysis that is done because the resource that you're using is not replaceable. And so there are externalities here that are simply not dealt with in a typical analysis of the economic impact of a zoning change. You can easily go up or down once the place is developed, but you can never go back to its natural state. Well, I fudge a little golf course is hardly a natural state, but you get the general idea. It's also important to remember that there is more than one interested party in this. So if, for example, we were talking to the Utility Commission, we'd be talking about both, we'd be talking about the power company, we'd be talking about the rate payer and we'd be talking about the commission and its fiduciary responsibility. Here, of course, you've got a broader responsibility than a fiduciary one. But when one looks at the analysis, to do it completely, you need to look at each of the stakeholder groups and figure out what the impact is. It is also true that these externalities can in fact be quantified, in fact, are commonly quantified. So if you were, for example, changing the vista in a national park, that would be quantified. It is no different.
Mi- Michael, your time is up.
If I if I may finish then.
No, I'm sorry.
I would just wanted to thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Sampson. I'm here to talk against this zoning proposal for Alvamar. They had come from Kansas and from around the world, from Coffeyville and Council Grove, from Jamaica and Japan. Most had families. They wanted to buy a house in a beautiful neighborhood where the children could play and were willing to pay extra for a special place. They found one. It was called Alvamar. Many paid more than they could really afford. What made the neighborhood special were its green spaces and large trees, all of which afforded beautiful views year round. There were pathways connecting the green spaces that allowed the owners to exercise and to walk their dogs and to visit their neighbors. The green spaces also allowed people to play golf, although most of the property owners did not do so. Recently, when the system that brought water to Nine Holes needed repair, the new owner refused to fix it. Too expensive was the explanation. And so the Nine Holes failed. The homeowners were all disappointed, but there were still green spaces and trees and pathways. The neighborhood was still special. Then the homeowners learned there was more to the failure of the Nine Holes than they had realized. A recommended zoning change would fill the green spaces perhaps with apartments. If that happened, the new owner developer would make a lot of money. The property owners would make no money, but they would lose everything that had made their neighborhood special. It would become a dense housing development, the very opposite of the special neighborhood held out to them when they bought their homes. The person who made that pitch to me was Bob Billings. Some proponents of infill development find it easy to call objecting property owners nimby's. They criticize them for blocking progress. These property owners do not agree to these labels or the criticism. They have done nothing wrong. Yet, without protection from a zoning change, they knows they could lose their neighborhood. And if they lose it, they will lose way too much of the biggest investment most of them have ever made. The developer is entitled to some consideration here as well. Developers are important. They are counted on to help a community make the changes the community wants. They operate at arm's length from the city. They are entitled to operate profitably. In this case, the developer is the owner. One can make a reasonable argument that developer stands to benefit the most from the zoning change for this green space. Under these circumstances, what might the city what might the city consider about the developer? Perhaps the developer's track record.
Sir, that's time. Thank you.
All right.
Hey, name's Andrew Dalager. I want to apologize. I know this probably a little bit unorthodox. I just had a quick question about H that we did earlier. I was late in hearing that these advisory boards existed and I was just curious, when is the next time that someone is able to apply for a position on one of those advisory boards? Or if you could just point me in the direction of where that info is, I I just don't know and it'll take me an hour on Google, so.
Yeah, Sherry, would you be able to advise Mr. Dalager?
Sure, on the, I mean, I'm happy to get your information and send you the link to the advisory board page. There's always vacancies.
Okay.
Upcoming and current, so it kind of depends on if you're looking at specific one and the commission is continually appointing folks to the advisory boards.
Okay, great. I just was hoping it wasn't like you gotta wait. I saw they were like three year appointments and I was like, man, I hope I didn't have to wait that long.
If you go on or what the city of Lawrence website, the commission, it'll take you to that page and you'll see an apply button.
No, yeah, and so
Okay.
Did that, applied, wasn't listed, was like, oh, man, am I three years now down the road, I'm going to be able to retry, so we're good to go. Thank you, guys.
Evening, commission. My name's Josh Sidon. I just wanted to talk about my my application to be on the Community Police Review Board. Obviously, there has, I've created controversy. That resulted in my departure from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. I own that, I acknowledge that. I want to talk about my commitment to community service and public service. Prior to my time in the DA's office, I was a sole practitioner representing the indigent accused for 10 years. I was essentially a public defender, but I was self-employed. I was doing it on my own. DA's office, I proudly worked for this community. One of the things I did there was I worked on the Brady Giglio policy, which is especially germane to the work of the CPRB. And it was something where there were difficult conversations that had to be had. We had to sit down with the Lawrence Police Department, the district attorney and I, we had to talk with Chief Lockhart. We had some difficult conversations. We had those conversations and we made it work. The Lawrence Police Department was amenable to working through those issues with us. And as you all know, policymaking is hard. Implementation is hard. This board has not gotten off the ground. The reason I applied was because I believe I am someone who can get this board off the ground. I can have those those difficult conversations. We created and formulated a working policy. I can do that for the city here. And when you've made some mistakes, what a better way to get right with the community than to serve that community. I'm here, I'm part of this community, I'm not going anywhere. I thank you for your time, I thank you for your service, I thank you for your consideration.
My name is Amel Tonkovich. I want I want to discuss regarding Alvamar a couple of issues. Fairness and the financial impact it will have on the neighbors. I my house is located on the third fairway of the old Alvamar nine. My house is just a 2,000 square foot average house. My next door neighbor is retired secretary. My neighbors on the other side are two young families. All of us will have significant impacts due to the rezoning. We have all relied on promises in the past and all of those promises have been broken. When these homes were initially sold, they were sold with an Alvamar membership. It was part of the price. The developer promised there would always be a golf course. When Mr. Fritzl bought the property, he promised there would always be a golf course. And we always and we always went along and understood the zoning rules when we purchased our home. All of those promises have been broken and as a result, our property has substantially depreciated. Even now, with just the threat of that area of that open space being developed, property values have already diminished. Two homes in my neighborhood just sold. And based on that sale, I my property has depreciated at least at least $50,000. And if this code goes through and is applied to our area, I guarantee you it will be developed. You will know who will develop it and our property will be our property values will be devastated. And I think it's something you have to consider when you look at this. Look at the fairness issue of this. We have relied on these promises forever. They have been made. And now we're in a situation where our property values are really being devastated and will be devastated in the future. There are a couple of other issues that other people will address that are so significant and I'm just going to briefly touch on them. One is the drainage issue out there. It is an unbelievably bad drainage situation. Now, I cannot imagine what it would be like if there's development on the Alvamar nine. The second thing Mr. Meyer spoke about is the wildlife. It's hard to imagine that that much wildlife is in the middle of Lawrence, but I could tell you this, I look out my deck every day and see it. And that will be gone. And for what? So a developer, Mr. Fritzl, can make more money? Really? Whose side are you going to be on in this issue? Thank you.
Not to worry, just one of us will speak. I'm Cecil Kingsley, this is my wife Teresa. We're here to speak on the land development code and the zoning and the Alvamar issue. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in strong support of the Alvamar Neighborhood Association. We sent an email, I think each of you got it. I've had one response, I appreciate. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me. Teresa and I moved here in 1987 with only a hope and a prayer. We opened a business and we weren't sure we were going to stay. We fell in love with the Alvamar neighborhood. And early upon arriving in Lawrence, I was introduced to Bob Billings by George Williams. John McGrew ended up in a conversation with us and we found quickly that we wanted to live in the Alvamar neighborhood. Took us quite a few years to be able to accomplish that and we were careful in making that choice. We found that the Alvamar neighborhood had a leg had a legacy that reached way beyond the city of Lawrence. We ran into people all over the United States that knew about Alvamar. At the time the golf course was changing hands, many of us became very concerned. We were promised in a public meeting that nothing's going to change. Multiple promises were made about the 36 holes, which then became 27 remaining, that the Sunflower nine would be maintained to the same standard of the championship course, that if you live on a hole of golf, you'll always live on a hole of golf. There was 100 of us there. We stood down, did not come down to the city commission to seek conditional approvals for their site plan. And the folks from Alvamar Inc., Bob Johnson and Jerry Magnuson, told the commission at the time that without this site plan approval, the purchase would not go through. So you ask, why is that important? Well, we're hearing about infill development now. I'm an engineer, some of you know. Infill development by definition is to develop undeveloped ground or underutilized ground. There's only one reason this is underutilized. It's already gone through site planning, approval and implementation by a developer. The city approved the development that's there that included the golf course. It's underutilized by design by the current owner. After he broke all the promises and wrecked the golf course, who buys a golf course and doesn't expect to maintain it and go ahead and upgrade the water system or whatever it takes to water it, take care of it? You wouldn't believe what we've been through and what we see where he stripped the sod and the things that look terrible.
Cecil, that's your time, sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I thought I had timed this.
So could you bring up the video, please? Well, that's happening. I'm Jim Potorff. My wife Judy and I have lived in Alvamar for over 20 years. We're on the fairway of the sixth hole and I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I know a number of us have talked with you already and some of you have already seen this video, but I'll be followed by Melinda Ball, who can give some basically context from a basically a hydrographic perspective. But you see here flooding that's occurred very recently. From my layman's perspective, as I watched the sod being stripped off of our golf courses, when that happened, obviously erosion began. Additionally, failure to water zoysia causes the zoysia to die. When the zoysia died, then the grass was washed away. When the grass was washed away, then we had the sod washed away, resulting in a lot of limestone. And that's not a very good area for absorbing water that was otherwise absorbed by the grass and soil that was there before. Consequently, again, from a lay perspective, this is unprecedented flooding. Certainly in my experience over 20 years, I've never seen anything like this. And as a number of the speakers said, this is simply a tragedy to see occur in what otherwise has been a beautiful open space. Many of us are not golfers. I'm a runner. I've run over all of Alvamar over the years. In the winter, I cross country ski and I know I'm not the only one that does that. Perhaps we shouldn't have been there, but that's the beauty of having open spaces like we've had for the last 20 years plus. And I will yield my time to Melinda Ball, who can talk a little bit about what you're seeing here from an expert's point of view with respect to, I think, geology, etc.
Just to be clear, we can leave that up, but we will just start the
Yeah, that's fine, three. I got I got my three. Okay, I'm good. Hello, my name is Melinda Ball. The most important concern we have as a community is the protection of our environmentally sensitive areas and open green spaces. Plan 2040 reflects this. Many cities have had environmental ordinances in place for well over a decade. Unfortunately, Lawrence has never had stream buffer and erosion ordinances for protections outside the floodplain. As shown in these videos, Alvamar area experiences substantial flooding caused by erosion and neglect. Flooding adds pressure downstream as those streams ultimately feed into the Waukerusa River and its riparian zone, including floodplains and wetlands. Water systems are connected. Therefore, the entirety of the system should share protections. Additionally, those protections must be enforced and not subverted in favor of the applicant. Carl Capps and Scott Robinson's recent meeting with the planning staff revealed that the Mid-America Regional Council guidelines for stormwater best management practices are the intended template. While these guidelines are currently being integrated into the proposed drafted code, we currently have nothing in place. The proposed guidelines remain subject to interpretation, thus creating uncertainty into what may result from the final draft. Additionally, the Mark 5600 will be revising guidelines in 2026. Under curtain code, there's a risk these essential water systems, including streams and associated habitat, could be destroyed. We strongly recommend that the city commission not take any action that promotes development on any existing open space that will threaten storm drainage, increase erosion, exacerbate environmentally sensitive conditions or concerns. Proposed development on sensitive lands must have public engagement, not fast-tracked with administrative approval. If Lawrence desires and values the reputation as a green community, then it will do what is necessary to guarantee that the appropriate protections are taken now without further delay. This concern must take precedence as we are far behind the curve and we are already experiencing more extreme daily rainfall. There's too much too much at risk to let the proposed code be subject to a one-year testing period, thereby threatening protections of environmentally sensitive areas. Designated open spaces, including Alvamar, should not, under any circumstance, be laboratories for developers to advance their profit goals with the support of their lawyers and engineers. Will you please commit to completing the city of Lawrence interpretation of the market guidelines no later than the implementation of the land development code to prevent ponds from being filled, streams from being erased, soils stripped by erosion, neglect and critical habitats from being destroyed? Thank you.
I'm Dave Barnhill and I don't have any videos, but I peppered you all with videos some years ago from what is now the 17th hole on Alvamar. That's where Tom got to pay $400,000 to the EPA, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The regulation of storm water and storm drainage in this city is criminal. It's it's just unbelievable. It's just unbelievable that we don't do a better job of protecting and directing water that runs off from these large building projects, these large streets. There is a wonderful corridor all the way to the Waukerusa from Sixth Street. You destroy it if you destroy the Almar area. It's, it is phenomenal. We have owls. It's really a neat place to live. I went to Lawrence High, I went to West Junior High. It was aspirational. I live next door to where my boss lived when I was in high school. I'm really, you know, that's making it for a Lawrence kid. And Tommy has destroyed it. I hate to bring up Tommy, but developers don't give a, at anything other than their profit motive and the ease with which they can develop the land. They don't care. We have to have regulations in a city like Lawrence. It's genuinely, it's criminal that nothing has been done. Thank you.
Hello, thank you guys for your service and time tonight. My name is Kelly Luke and my husband and I have owned a home in Lawrence for over 30 years. I can't believe it's been that long, but the last 12 in the Almar Neighborhood. And we have every intention of living in this home for the rest of our lives. And we've invested a great deal of our time, our energy, our money in this home and the community that we love so much. Our son is currently a KU student and proud Jayhawks, so our lifelong commitment to Lawrence is real. The Almar Neighborhood is long established, it's beautiful, it's diverse, even somewhat historic, as you know, and it has an abundance of green spaces everyone else has spoken so much more eloquently than me about tonight. But it's a stable part of the city and I would venture to say the average tenure of ownership is really quite long. And I would think that would be a great benefit to the city of Lawrence. Changing the zoning to R2, which decreases the minimum lot size and enables dense housing to replace our current green space, will have a destabilizing effect on the community. Property values will decline, as you've heard, and no doubt prompting some to sell their homes. It will also create environmental issues, as was just spoken about, even more than I realized, to be perfectly honest. And every homeowner in this neighborhood has invested in a golf course community and has reasonably relied on those promises and assertions that were made to us when we did that. I'm just asking you to please stand up for the citizens of this community and protect our property rights as well as preserve the green space for future generations. Our family and our neighbors fully support the recommendations of the Almar Neighborhood Association and we ask you as our council members to support them as well. Thank you for your time.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to address you. My name is John Munchop. I live in the Almar area. I live on Inverness. I moved, I've lived there for 31 years. I moved to Almar because I thought it had a great character and a unique character and a great neighborhood to raise my children and grandchildren in. I'd like to say that I concur with everything that has been said earlier and with an urge to just get to the bottom line and maybe be blunt, but to rezone Almar is a colossal, irreversible, bad idea. And I wish you would take that point of view and not change the zoning, leave it the way that it is. One topic that hasn't been addressed is traffic patterns on Inverness Drive. I live on Inverness Drive. Over 31 years, I've seen the traffic patterns change. It's a two-lane road. If you, if this is rezoned and turned into additional multi-unit housing, you're going to see traffic, traffic jams that you just, that the neighborhood can't put up with, as well as just damage to the roads, which are now being replaced every two to three years. So you're just going to increase your costs of maintaining the infrastructure if you go ahead and increase the number of housing units in this area. So thank you for the opportunity.
Hi, I'm Shelley Barnhill and I've drawn subdivisions. I've worked for developers and engineers. And one of the things I'd like to ask you to do is just look at a map. The Almar Neighborhood is a beautiful piece of design. Bob Billings did an excellent job. If you look at it, you know it's special when you see it on a map. You know that it is just absolutely gorgeous, the way the roads hug the terrain, the way everything drains. As the other gentleman said, infrastructure, it's going to be hurt. Our streets are going to be hurt. We recently have a house going up nearby. Our streets have hurt. You're going to have to add fire hydrants, you're going to have to do the sewer, you're going to have to do schools, you're going to have to do police, you're going to have to do. Just so much of this, think about the big picture of how this would impact not only the community of Almar, but the whole city, the whole cost of things. The developers not going to pick up that cost. The whole city of Lawrence will. So please, think about keeping it. It's a historic, beautifully planned neighborhood that was done 50 years ago when land planning was really changing. It's historic. It's an artwork. And do you think about how it impacts the future of our city? Thank you.
You know, it's a good time for me to interject. Somebody left their phone up here. I don't know whose this is. So I've heard a number of statements about the Almar area there and as somebody who's lived around here long enough to remember have laid tile in some of those houses when they were built, that was back in another career. I find it interesting that they act like the only place owls exist is in Almar. I live off of 23rd Street near Lawrence Avenue and we have owls right across from Pepper Tree in our backyard. I walked out my front door the other day and I saw a falcon, maybe a hawk, definitely was one of those two, falcon or hawk, tearing apart a rabbit in my neighbor's yard. So the idea that the wildlife is going to just disappear because we built some housing is kind of insane. The last statements about the developer and not picking up any of the costs, I'm sorry that not everybody understands, but when housing developments are done and the city signs those contracts, the developer does actually pick up most of the costs when it comes to installing water lines, installing hydrants. A lot of that stuff, the developer picks up and it's not just the city. When you're talking about maintenance, that's going to be a normal aspect of it. I had a lot of other things I wanted to talk about tonight, but I guess I'll be the naysayer to this because I'm a housing advocate, a housing-first advocate, something that you guys can't actually understand. We need people to actually be in homes so that they can stabilize in the community. And to isolate this rich-ass community and say that theirs doesn't deserve to be disturbed while we have people living on the streets because we don't have enough housing is obscene to me. Invoking the name of Bob Williams or Bob Billings and George Williams and all them, it's great, there's streets named after them, let's move on. There's not a golf course there, there's reasons why there's not a golf course there. We need housing. And it's time to put up some reasonably priced housing in all areas of town, not just one or two. What I originally came here to talk about was Mr. Sidon's attempted appointment to the CPRB. And I'm ashamed that city leaders won't actually come out and say who they appointed or who they nominated. And I want to correct that it is actually a nomination. It says that in the city code, that the commissioners are nominating somebody. So the idea that somebody would nominate Josh Sidon to a position on the CPRB, a board that's supposed to oversee bias with the police. Somebody who let his bias show repeatedly in his own office. And got fired because of it, because his behavior escalated out of control. And now he wants to come back and make all amends and serve. What has it been, two weeks, three weeks?
Before anybody continues, can we please stop the cross chatter? Thank you. I didn't want to interrupt anyone, but between people, I just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
All right, my name is Dr. Justin Spees and it's really me, it's not Josh Sidon dressed up in a wig. Notice he was here earlier trying to plead his case to you guys. He was fired for impersonating me while on the clock there at the District Attorney's Office. And I'm sure you liked that, Amber Sellers. You nominated him to be on the Community Police Review Board after he had been fired for that obvious and clear bias towards me.
We already discussed boards and commissions.
So how come you didn't stop Michael just a minute ago and he was speaking about it there, Amber? Because I called you out as the one that nominated Josh despite his clear bias towards me, towards the community? I mean, put yourself in my position there, Amber.
Point of order.
I see you're wearing a large yellow shirt right there and some ridiculously oversized glasses there.
Sir, sir.
What if he put on a big old yellow shirt, stuffed it with pillows, put on some ridiculous glasses and started stuffing his face with some food?
All right.
And it was all caught on camera? And then I was up there at.
Sir, this is your warning.
What have I done wrong? What have I done wrong? What was the point of order for? What have I done wrong?
Mayor.
What am I not allowed to talk about now?
Sherry, sorry to talk.
The business of the commission? Okay, so you, Amber Sellers, as a commissioner, nominated Josh Sidon to a position up here. Is that germane enough?
Sir, this is your warning. If you can.
Okay, Bart, explain to me how I am not being germane right now, please.
Sherry, well.
Mayor.
Yes.
Typically, commission items is when you don't take public comment on an item, you've historically allowed folks to comment on that during public comment. You did not take public comment on nominations.
Okay. All right. So continue. Your time has been paused. You still have approximately a minute and 45.
Okay, so like I was saying, put yourself in my position there, Amber Sellers. You're wearing a large, oversized, yellow shirt and some ridiculously oversized glasses and some fake hair, I imagine, whereas mine's real. And let's say Sidon put that big ass yellow shirt on and stuffed it with pillows, put some ridiculous glasses on in a wig and started stuffing his face with food and did it while he was a district attorney down there. And then I was commissioner and sat up there and I said, oh, he's been fired for doing that, but I'm going to appoint him. How would you feel about that, Amber? Would you see the clear bias, especially from someone as the deputy DA that prosecuted me for bullshit fucking charges while looking the other way as I get attacked in the streets of Lawrence and I come in here and tell you guys about it and you don't do a fucking thing either? Do you think you would still nominate him there, Amber? Do you think you'd nominate him still? And do you think you guys would find your courage when you're asked by LJ World, Lawrence Times to say who did it instead of, oh, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know who it was? It was Amber Sellers. It's been reported on, not by these losers, LJ World and Lawrence Times, but it's been reported on. So what do you say, Amber? Do you see that bias in there?
Sir, can you please stop the cross chatter?
And Sidon comes up here and wants to talk about, you know, how he wants to work with the community to right his wrongs? It's interesting, he didn't even bother to apologize to me, the guy that he did this to. If you want to know more about his bias, look up Justice for Lucy, widely reported.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers and I totally back what they, well, not, I don't totally back what they were saying. Not, no insults, but the rage that you put, you put the board appointments on the commission items and I'm pretty sure you specifically, someone did, someone specifically put it there to avoid public comment. Because I looked through past meetings and the mayor, like, people are normally appointed under the consent agenda under mayor appointments. Now, we did, when we did the Community Police Oversight Work Group, we appointed them all at once, but that was done under regular agenda items. So when has it ever been precedence that we appoint someone during commission items? And it's an, it's an item that you take action on, you make a vote on something. So you discuss something and then vote on it and then you don't open it up for public comment. And had it been on consent agenda, if you would have wanted to discuss one of the nominees, you could have. And also, here's what's really kind of puzzling. There were people on the list when it originally came out and then the list was updated and it just has a green asterisk, it doesn't say what was updated and you had to look and it's like some people's names are removed. And I talked to someone that was, name was removed and he said he didn't know why. And he also wasn't sure who nominated him. And that's really, it's so shady, like, being on a board, it's like, look at land development, like, and historic stuff where someone's ability to get a license to build something to make money, like, this is, thousands of dollars could be on the line. And I just wonder if any of y'all are appointing people that might have donated large amounts to your campaign. And we won't know because we don't know who nominated anyone. And from what it sounds like, I don't think Commissioner Sellers wanted us to find out that she nominated the, one of the previous commenters. And, okay, I'm. Also, when it, I just want to comment on the golf course. I'm glad people care about the environment, but I was just thinking, wouldn't it be even more environmentally friendly if we take out the golf course and replace it with like prairie grass and natural prairie plants? And then the animals, they won't be disturbed by golfers constantly walking around, you know, hitting balls at them? I do think it'd be more environmentally friendly to replace that golf course with prairie grass. Thank you.
Okay, everybody. My name is David Bastin. I wasn't going to speak on the Almar deal, but then they showed some video to you guys of air that was flooding and that is a flood zone already in there. So I don't know if you guys knew that, but it does flood all the time when it rains, especially this last rain that we had, four inches an hour, every place in town was flooded. But that was that day. Yeah, we're looking for more housing throughout town and, I mean, yeah, I feel for them that they lose their nice center in their backyard that doesn't belong to them. So, yeah, we did more housing, so that's my two cents on that. And I did apply to some of the boards online. Don't know if you guys got any of that. What I applied to, someone said that I wasn't, they didn't get my application, so I did it again. So hopefully you guys get it, got that, or if you didn't, I've did it three times. So if you had nothing on there, then something's wrong with your online system. And if I wouldn't. Another thing on that, when you apply, do you get an email back? I mean, I got confirmation when I applied, but I still don't know if you guys got. So do you email the people back that weren't selected or whatever? Or do you just leave everybody hanging until you guys approve? I actually came down here tonight to see who was on those lists because I was thinking before those names were brought out. So I don't know who it was, you guys voted and they're on there and I guess I just need to go find out who you guys put on the boards. So what else? I did have a question too. The last meeting I was at, I think it was two meetings or three ago, that we were going to open up the balancing act again and for a month, which I would have just closed out. Does that information get posted? Do you? I would have just closed out. Does that information get posted? Do you, you guys requested it also along with myself? Do you guys get that information back to you so you can see what you requested? Does the public get to see what changes? I know we were going to take employees away from the fire department. Did those things on the balancing act work themselves out where people really didn't want that to happen? So it's just up in there. I don't know results of any of that. So it'd be nice if, if you could let people know.
Thank you, Mr. Bastin.
All right, I'm going to go off script here at the beginning. Patrick Ross, 66049. First of all, I just want to say how proud I am to see so many members of the community here to speak on issues that they care about. To help in doing that, I would also suggest that we press our city to allow for public comment at the beginning of the meeting and to broadcast such comments to the city and the citizens so that more people can be aware of issues that the public deems to be very important to speak about. And so one of them I'd like to address is an issue related to the wetland south of town. I'm involved with the Save the Walkover River Valley Group and, and the opposition to the new Boston Crossing Project. If you look at the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Policies Resolution 5702 from 1995, the third line states, whereas the city of Lawrence wants to avoid large developments of low-income housing and desires affordable housing opportunities scattered throughout the community for all income categories, the 500 affordable housing units in the revised new Boston Crossing Project would be an intensive concentration of low-income housing in direct conflict with the city policy, in effect, a ghetto. Right now, the largest low-income housing project is Edgewood Homes with 130 units at Haskell Avenue and 16th Street. It was built by the Lawrence Housing Authority in 1972 before the US HUD stopped building projects of high concentrations of low-income people in favor of, quote, "scatter site housing spread throughout the community." Separating people in large concentrations by class or income tends to stigmatize them. This element of affordable housing, in addition to the project being on floodplain land, using a flawed H&amp;H study, the lack of due process in John Hassey's BZA appeal against it, the former planning director who wrote the floodplain code, the amended plan since the city's approval of the project, is merely an attempt to include another developer who failed to acquire wetland adjacent land from Baker University in a similar referendum of public dissent on the issue. The destruction of 12 acres of wetland and adjacent wildlife and the historical importance of the area to Haskell should be clear indications that this project should not be allowed to proceed further. Please also consider that Lawrence's population is dominated by 58% of its population being renters, who unfortunately do not have the same rights to protest or interact with development because of a lack of standing. This is important to note as the new land development code will allow for more administrative determinations and less public oversight. And lastly, I'll just summarize sort of my thoughts from what I've heard this evening. I support the Albemarle individuals in preserving open space. I really love Chris Flowers's recommendation of native plants. That's a beautiful idea. It's an idea that the city should adopt both within the city and beyond as we hope to control climate change and look forward to a more sustainable future. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Debbie Headen, and I live on Turnberry Drive with my husband. 22 years ago, we bought a house there that overlooks the lake and the golf course across the street from us and have enjoyed that neighborhood very much. I can tell you from speaking with many neighbors, I've yet to find anybody who is in favor of the rezoning idea in our neighborhood because it will disturb everything you've heard talked about tonight. I was told that the consultant, Ms. Garvin, was going to be here tonight. Is she here at the meeting? She's not. So I will pose two questions to you. First of all, have any of you walked the neighborhood to talk to the Albemarle residents? I'm curious to know that because I think you'd find that, that there isn't anybody in favor of the rezoning because it will negatively impact our property values. And second question is, with the situation with rezoning, I'm curious how you can justify this when it would impact an entire neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening. I'm John Tiffy, and I'm here also because of the 2040 zoning proposal change. Previous city leaders, land planners and builders were to develop what they called Albemarle, a housing development around 36-hole green space golf course. I moved to Lawrence 30 years ago. Every time someone from Kansas City to Pecan or surrounding communities asked me where I lived, I would say Lawrence. They would all comment about Lawrence being a wonderful, vibrant university community. They would also comment about Albemarle area and how beautiful it was. Almost everyone I talked to knew about this beautiful development. In recent years, the Albemarle Golf Course was sold and became the Jayhawk Club. The two original 18-hole courses were changed to an 18 and a nine-hole. The nine-hole was active for a while, but was closed at the, at the, is closed at the moment, but the green space remains. Green space is a precious commodity. Once it is developed, it's lost forever. Many communities have developed their green spaces and regret having done so. Green space can be defined, can define a city, town, or a community. I have a son who lives in Dallas, Texas. I recently visited him and he took me, his wife, three children, his mother and me to a park in downtown Dallas. The park was built over a highway at great expense. Once you develop green space, it's hard and costly to give back. I hope you preserve green space for the citizens of Lawrence so that others in the future can say, thank you. Thank goodness the leaders of Lawrence had the foresight, the wisdom, the courage, the stamina to preserve the remaining green space for the citizens of Lawrence instead of allowing it to be developed. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for letting us speak. I appreciate your efforts and your work you do for the city. My name's Herb Lloyd. I've lived in the Albemarle neighborhood for 32 years in three different homes. We are not rich. We are not wealthy. We are frugal. We are thrifty, and we work very hard to live where we live. I'd like to read you a letter that we mailed you all yesterday, or sent you yesterday. Honorable Lawrence City officials, if you decide to change the zoning in our neighborhood, we understand that you continue to raise, you can continue to raise the mill levy, and you can continue to collect taxes you deem necessary to run city government while the value of our homes go down. Would you please not continue to raise the appraised value of our homes, raise the mill levy, and in turn our taxes, all the while hurting the value of our homes by changing the neighborhood zoning? Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Dan Timmich. I live on property that abuts the Albemarle 9. We've been there, my wife and I, for 25-plus years. We've raised our family there. I will just state that we are members of the Albemarle Neighborhood Association. We support their recommendations. I'll use the rest of my time to speak briefly to the comments that were made here earlier by an individual who I no longer see in the room. And just remind the commission that we are not here to ask, ask for any special treatment. We're not here to be asked to be considered to be preferential to anyone else in the city. What we are asking for is that the zoning designation be left the way that it's been since the Albemarle neighborhood was originally designed and developed all those years ago. My understanding about the current designation is that it does allow for residential housing, but with some restrictions that would be lost if this proposed change were made. Again, we're not here thinking that we're better than everybody else, pretending like we come from a neighborhood that can't be touched. We're just asking that the promises be honored and that the zoning designations be left the way that they've been since this neighborhood and development was originally designed those many years ago. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Commissioners, Scott Robinson, 4210 Nicholas Drive, the president of the Albemarle Neighborhood Association. As many of you know, I might be responsible for some of what's taken place today. I did send out a memorandum asking people to come and make public comment because we were told as we started investigating the closing of the golf course and then learning about the land development code being changed, that our voices would be heard and that if people had opinions one way or another, that they should come before you and planning and steering to make their voices heard. And we've done that. And so I'm so proud of the people that have showed up tonight. This, this, I just asked them a couple of days ago, so this was not a long, long planned event. But we intend to take every opportunity we have to make public comment to, you know, let it be known that we're very concerned about the unintended consequences of a zoning change that's being entertained with the current land development code changes. So I'm not going to use any more of your time. We've talked a lot. I appreciate your attention and thank you.
Looking like there's not any additional public comment in the room. Sherry, any on Zoom?
No, mayor.
All right. I'll bring it back to us. And I would entertain motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second motion.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.